We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the meetings held September 24th and October 3rd, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries. We have one person wishing to address the board, and that is Will House, is that correct? And it is on a non-agenda item, so you will have five minutes if you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Will House. I'm a senior member of the Lincoln High School cross-country team. I recently wrote an article for our school paper, The Statesman, detailing the controversies surrounding a district policy mandating that student athletes must wear a shirt during practice without exception regardless of the sport. I worked for weeks to find a proper justification of why the policy was being enforced and was disappointed with what I found. Neither Lincoln High's athletic director, Joey Strube, nor the district athletic director, Casey Miley, seemed to actually know why the policy existed in the first place, but for whatever reason, they seem to be willing to perform feats of rhetorical gymnastics to maintain it. I'd like to read the policy as it's currently written in case you're unfamiliar with its contents. Both boys and girls must wear tops at practice. Sports bras do not constitute as a top. Because there is a definite relationship between appropriate dress, good work habits, and proper school behavior, Sioux Falls School District Athletics have developed this practice. Our goals are to help students focus on their performance without distractions, to focus on their success, to decrease the number of harassment issues, and to have a place where students feel comfortable with themselves and others. Student athletes are expected to show good judgment by dressing appropriately. The overall goal of the dress code is to not disrupt the educational environment. So to call back there, it claims that there is a definite relationship between how a student dresses and their academic ability, which is often used as a justification for like discriminatory dress codes. And by setting this as a reason for why athletes must be wearing shirts during practice, it implies something that just isn't true. I'd comfortably claim that at least seventy-five percent of the cross-country athletes are named athlete scholars each season, and that would mean they maintain a GPA of three-point five or above. And so despite the claim of a definite correlation, the evidence shows otherwise, at least in this situation. And I would definitely recommend wording the policy different regardless of whether or not we change anything else. But I will also qualify that it mentions there is an intention to decrease the number of harassment issues as well as the distraction element that may come with someone not wearing a shirt, but I would argue that human bodies aren't necessarily a distraction, and if someone's behaving inappropriately, it's up to the coach to tell that student to knock it off. I don't think hiding people under a shirt is necessarily the solution to types of harassment issues. Also, I will make the point that up until about a month ago, this policy was not enforced the way it was written. So for the past three years while I've been on cross-country, we were allowed to run shirtless, and there was never any harassment issues or anything of that nature or distractions as it claims there may be. I interviewed also all of the other team members, and no one felt different than I do. But yeah, one big point is that we're not looking to make everyone run shirtless, we just like the option to. About last season, at the beginning of the season, we had a fellow community member join us. He was just out for a run at the same time we were, and he ran with us. And the next day after practice, he called the school and he told our coach, Pooley, he said, "You got a couple of fantastic runners on your team." And he donated some money to the team, and we had been running shirtless, but he wasn't looking at how we looked, he was looking at our character. And so what you wear doesn't necessarily reflect that, and I'd argue that's proof. Yeah, and so to conclude, I'm just here to ask tonight what steps need to be taken in order to amend the policy, and I'd just like to have our students be able to take ownership over their own bodies. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Will, I read the article, well-written, and it is something that we appreciate you coming to the board with, so it will be taken under consideration. Thanks. All right. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries. And good news report, Dr. Nold.
In the absence of Ms. Conrad, you have me tonight for the good news report. That's not the good news, but I will first recognize individuals we have here from Augustana College with the advanced journalism class, and they are here in attendance, so if you see some of the increased numbers, part of that is the advanced journalism class that is with us here from Augustana. Now to the good news part. I will give a brief overview of the Teacher Pathway Program, and that was a board report that you have heard in the past, a couple times in the past, but just very quickly here before we have a couple individual students that will talk to you or give a little bit of their background and experiences with the Teacher Pathway Program. If you recall, there was four main purposes for the Teacher Pathway Program. One, to introduce our students to the career of education. Secondly, to be able to create a workforce that is more reflective of our student population in a sense of diversity. Third thing is to be able to train all the students that are in the class to become more culturally responsive in our career of education, to be able to recognize and accept and to utilize the strengths of all different backgrounds within the classroom setting, and to develop a workforce to fill some of those hearts, to fill positions, or a base of applicants that we'd have for teaching positions within the Sioux Falls School District. We started with the Teacher Pathway Program with discussions with students in the 2016-17 school year, where we met with groups of students, Dr. Maher, myself, Becky Dorman, and met with groups of students at each of the individual high schools, and talked about a career in education. We also then had individuals from Oregon come and meet with us to talk about creating a Teacher Pathway Program in April 2017, and then took students down to University of South Dakota to visit the education program, both in April 2017 and in 2018. Becky and I remember that. It was quite the cold windy day when we were down there with that group of students, but it was an outstanding experience for those students to be able to see what the college campus was and to at least initially look into the career of education. With us are a couple of the teachers that are part of that program, at least three of which are here tonight, are able to be here tonight. Sarah Clavon with Lincoln High School, and they partner with Robert Frost, and Sarah is here. Trey Erickson with New Tech High School, and they partner with Hayward. And then we have Gina Benz with Roosevelt, and they partner with Oscar Howe. And then Allison Turhorse is working with Washington High School, and they partner with the Annie Sullivan Program there. And the final piece here before we hear from some of the teachers, they did a lot of work over the last couple of years, the teachers, the group of teachers did, in writing the curriculum and spent several hours down here at the Instructional Planning Center, creating a product that our students would enjoy to be able to see the satisfaction that comes from becoming a teacher. They also worked with University of South Dakota to allow students to take the class to get credit, so the first semester they can have a college credit, second semester they can have two for the full year, and that was open to all students. So University of South Dakota worked with the Board of Regents to be able to open that up so that any student could get credit regardless of GPA or other qualifications that sometimes come with that credit. And then we worked to recruit students and be able to get students into that program. And so when we go to the numerics of that, we were hoping, as we'd said in earlier times, if we could get sixty or seventy students, that would be outstanding. We had a hundred and forty register for the course, a hundred and nineteen were actually able to get into the class, sometimes with schedule conflicts and things, some of those, especially if they were juniors, just had to wait for that next year possibly to be able to take that. And then we have twenty-six students that are of ethnic diversity within that class. We are hoping all of those eventually become teachers, but if not, they become tax-paying citizens within communities, so they have a better knowledge of the educational system, you know, they have the ability to help us when it comes to things like bond issues or supporting schools or working within our schools. So at this time, there will be a short picture collage that will go on the screen and show some of the classroom photos when they're working with the students at those different elementary schools. They go one day a week for an hour, and some of the students will come up and talk to you about their experiences and be able to answer a few questions if you'd like. So I will start the photo. We will start out here with the students. If you can make your way up, we'll start with Lincoln, a couple students from Lincoln High School. And I'll have you guys introduce yourselves, and then you can say a little bit with regards to the class.
It's good to see you guys again. How am I talking to you? Chanté, washte, na pe chiusa pe kishto, Delilah Rouse, Amachiapi. Hello, guys, nice to see you. Today I shake your hand with a good heart. My name is Delilah Rouse, and I am one of the twenty-six ethnic women in the classroom. And today I would like to advocate and stand with this Teacher Pathway Class as for it finds a voice for us younger generations to connect with the future generations. Also, the fact that we could share memories and share lessons with them and grow, because we are all students and teachers as we continue to grow on this planet and this earth. And I would also like to say, we'll be lucky guys for allowing us to walk this way of life and to teach the younger future generations, because without them, I don't think we would have that factor to grow as one with unity and diversity. And my biggest takeaway from this class is to really understand that we are changing and we are evolving, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha. Nice to meet you guys again. I just wanted to say that for me, I really like how interactive our class is and how we're not always sitting down, like we're always moving around. And I really appreciate the opportunity to visit kids at Robert Frost, because hate to admit this, but I'm getting attached to all of them. And they're just such precious little human beings, I guess. And I really enjoy our classroom environment, because like we're learning how people become teachers, and it's very hard and like just like, you know, understanding education. And also, I would like to say that with this class, I hope it actually, you know, prospers into, it's not just an idea that lasts for like a year or something like that, and it becomes something great and big and, you know. Thank you, that's it.
Hello, my name is Paula Rope, and I am the lone wolf from Roosevelt High School. And what I like so much about Teacher Pathway is, is a course that allows students to realize their passion about learning. And I have learned, I have discovered my passion for that class, too. Since early in life, since I am an immigrant, I came from a different country of South Sudan. So when I was young, I really didn't understand the importance of education, but as I grew older, I knew that education was very vital to me and for me to secure a future for myself. The mantra, "Knowledge is power," is something I take very to heart. And what I like so much about this course is going to Oscar Howe and meeting the little kids. They're just wonderful, they're always energetic, and sometimes they're pretty funny. And this class, I think, should be primarily insulated in the Sioux Falls School District, because it is very vital, I think, and can help many students find their passion for education and possibly make even better teachers, since they have a head start when they go to college and finally become teachers. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have an opportunity to meet with the students in each of the classes at each of the four schools over the last couple of weeks, and all of them had stated they wished they had even more time to spend in the elementary schools, working with those students. So we're trying to look at possible for full-day shadow experiences and some things like that, but all the teachers, obviously, they enjoy them in the classroom, they just love having that time with those elementary kids and working with them. So that is just an overview and good news of the, a good news report of the Teacher Pathway Program that is up and running now in all four of our schools. So if there was any other questions, I'd be happy to answer, but thank you for your support of that program and the ability for those students to be able to be in that class.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie on the program?
No. I just would like to commend you all, the teachers and the students, and Jamie, for your work on this program. You know, it meets with our strategic goal of diversifying our staff and by exposing students in our district, we're hopefully growing our own, and it's a wonderful program for the students and our teachers in our school district, so thank you.
It's exciting to see the passion that they've got already, so I can't wait to see you as teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know, I can't remember which one, have you asked about a commitment from the school district for this to continue? I think it's safe to say that as long as Dr. Maher is here, there's a pretty strong, well, very strong commitment for this program to continue, and I think I can speak pretty safely for the five of us on the board that there is a huge commitment from us to do what the program is designed to do, to eventually have our teaching staff look more like the students that attend our schools. So we've got a good start, and we'll keep working on it. Thank you. All right.
Dr. Nold, are you going to do another introduction? We have a lot, what's that? We have a lot, we have a lot of students here. You did? I should have paid better attention.
Yeah. The journalism students that are here from Augustana.
I do not feel foolish.
That's, that's good. Okay. Conflicts of interest, there were none to come before us tonight. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Supplemental consent agenda, nine A, one and two claims to Sanford Health, may I have a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries with two abstentions, Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. And nine B, approval of claims to Avira, please.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries with one abstention, Board Member Parker. Sorry, I was trying to do two things at once. Reports of the, I was trying to read ahead, I shouldn't do that. Reports of the superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you. The first report tonight is a report coming to us from our Senior Director of Human Resources, Becky Dorman. The report will be a public hearing on the waiver request for exemption of plan of intent regulations. Mrs. Dorman?
Good evening, once again. The Department of Education allows school districts to work with their teachers in developing a plan to meet full state certification. Districts and teachers are given two years to meet this plan with an opportunity for a one-year extension, giving it a total of three years. However, to get that third year, we go through the public hearing process, and then the request of me coming forward to you, asking the board to authorize me to apply for a waiver for this one additional year, for a teacher to pass her Principles of Learning and Teaching Praxis test, which has already completed the fifteen credits required for her alternative certification and has this one last step to complete.
We'll consider the public hearing open. Is there anyone here to discuss that with us? If not, the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to acknowledge the public hearing and authorize the administration to proceed with applications for waivers from administrative rules?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Becky.
Second report this evening is a report on the High School Summer Up Recovery Program. That report will be delivered by Kristen Granager, who is our secondary curriculum coordinator. Mrs. Granager?
Beginning in 2016, Washington, Lincoln, and Roosevelt High Schools all began the Summer Up Recovery Program. This program was designed for students who were credit or too short of graduation or a little bit behind their cohort. Each year, we find there are twenty-five to fifty students who, at the end of their four years, need just a little bit more time to complete a course for graduation. This summer, Lincoln High School had twelve students who completed requirements for graduation. Roosevelt High School had nine, and Washington High School had eleven students. In addition to these students, there were other students who were able to complete coursework to catch up with their cohort. Table A shows the number of students who have participated in the Summer Recovery Program for the past three summers. This year, Lincoln High School had ninety-nine students who earned fifty-nine and a half credits. Roosevelt High School had a hundred and eighty-six students participate in the program and complete eighty-four and a half credits, and Washington had seventy students complete forty-five credits. In addition, this past summer, our English Language Learner, or EL, students were given the opportunity to enroll in summer school at President's Academy. Like our Summer Recovery Program, President's Academy uses online coursework and teacher support to provide students with opportunities to either graduate or catch up with their cohort. This past summer, two students who completed coursework at President's Academy graduated with their 2018 cohort. The majority of the rest of the students are in this year's 2019 cohort and earn credits to enable them to be on track for graduation this year. Table B shows the number of students from each high school who enrolled in summer school at PA, the number of courses they completed, and the number of credits earned. So this summer, Lincoln had eight students participate, Roosevelt had twenty, and Washington had forty. And the students were able to earn a total of forty-five and a half credits. Students are not charged to participate in these programs. For the Summer Recovery classes, each high school receives an allocation of fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars, for a total of forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty. And District EL funds were used to fund the program at President's Academy, so again, there was no cost to students. Each slot at President's Academy costs six-hundred-and-forty dollars, for a total of thirty-eight-thousand-four-hundred dollars. The Summer Up Recovery classes at each high school provided an opportunity for students to catch up with their cohort or graduate and achieve college and career readiness by completing graduation requirements. I would ask the board to acknowledge this report, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions on the report?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? I think anytime we make an investment in our students who are struggling to be the best that they can be, it's a darn good investment. So thank you for the report. And we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries.
Okay, the third report tonight comes to us from Dr. Boyson. She is our Assistant Superintendent in charge of Academic Achievement. Her report is on the three-year program review of Summer Climate.
Good evening. Summer Climate seems like a long time ago, especially when you see the weather outside tonight, right? But I'm excited to bring you the results of our third year of the Summer Climate Program. The purpose of the report is just to provide that feedback. It feeds District Priority Area One, Student Outcomes, and it is strategic initiative to implement and evaluate the Summer Climate pilot of the three-year program. So during summer 2008, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-two students attend K-2 at Lorby Anderson, Hawthorne, and Hayward Elementary Schools. The student enrollment included a hundred and thirty-two students that attended for the first time, sixty students that returned for a second year in the program, and thirty students that were in their third year at that program. They were selected to participate based on their reading scores and becoming a reader through collaborative classroom, and also their math scores using Advantage Math Recovery System, and then our NWA MAP results. And those identified students that are performing below grade level, and they attended, we had permission, and they attended the program. They attended for eight weeks, Monday through Thursday. They started the program at eight-thirty, eight fifteen to eight-thirty. They came in, had some physical activity, had some breakfast. The morning was filled with reading and math activities. The afternoon, they were, they had opportunities to go out into the community in multi-age group peers, also work through projects in the classrooms and at the buildings. These opportunities provided students exposure to things that they might not have had throughout the rest of their schooling and throughout the community. And the teachers commented that have those students during the school year, that these opportunities provide support for the students throughout their year, that they can draw on for writing activities, and they have common knowledge amongst their peers. So it really is a great opportunity for students to expose them to things that they might not have that opportunity otherwise. We monitored their student motivation and engagement by their attendance, and the student attendance, last year, the average days missed, Hawthorne had students missed an average of three-point-nine days, Hayward five-point-six, and LBA three-point-nine-eight. So it just fluctuated between year one, two, and three, how many, which school had a higher attendance rate or a lower attendance rate based on that chart. But we used the NWA MAP assessment to measure the progress, and we looked at how they aligned with their non-attending peers. K-2 students, they take the MAP assessment that measures foundational skills and early numeracy and literacy skills. The two-five test really focuses on content knowledge, and it works to align great appropriate standards in math, reading, and language. And the MAP data measured their growth. And so if we look at the first chart here, this is the math growth for our students attending this year for Summer Climate. And we are using the baseline of zero as the non-attending peers. So if you think of their non-attending peers as zero, everything above the line is the growth that our students that attended Summer Climate achieved. So in kindergarten, those students achieved one-point-eight So in kindergarten, those students achieved 1.8, um, higher than their non-attending peers. Second grade was 2.98, almost three. Um, RIT growth above their non-attending peers and 3.4 in second grade. And that's in the area of math. And then if you look at chart C, chart C shows you the growth in reading, and, um, kindergarten was 1.1 above their non-attending peers. First grade was 3.27, and second grade was .5. And remember, when we get past those foundational skills, we're really getting into them being able to have multiple concepts that they can grab onto, they can comprehend and apply those. And so that's where we really make that strong growth from first to second grade. So during the summer of 2018, it was our third year, 30 of the original 171 students returned for a third year in the program. 60 students returned for a second year in the program. And then this, in charts D and E, will show that RIT growth of the summer climb students measured by the MAP, K-2 and the MAP 2-5 assessment. Again, students were selected at 10 because they're performing below their grade level peers, and that data shows the summer climb students in their first and third year in the program experienced higher growth than their non-attending peers. So if we look at chart D, chart D, we have our first grade students in orange there. They, that's two years in the program. They're 2.98 RIT growth above their non-attending peers. And those students that attended for three years, um, I'm sorry, the second year, the orange is the first year in the program, the gr, the green is the second year in the program for first grade students. And then we move on to second grade students, and this is the area of math. 3.4 is our second grade attendees for the first year. Point 3.6 is our second grade attendees for the second year in the program, and 3.61 is that third year in the program for math. So again, our first and our second years, or our third years, they're making more growth in that math. And then if we look at the next chart for reading, um, we see that same thing happening. The first year in the program for reading, we had 3.27 above, um, their non-attending peers, and 3.65 for the students that were two years in the program. And our second grade students, again, moving into those more difficult areas of reading, they still made growth if they were in the first year or the third year, but the second grade, there was some regression in there, those students that attended for their second year. And that follows back to the math. So then, just really looking at, um, how we help support those students. Um, the cost of the program was $233,000. And we served 222 students in grades K-2 at LBA Hawthorne and Hayward. They participated in the program. The student enrollment included 132 attending for the first year, 60 again returning for the second year, and 30 returning for that third year. There was student growth on that math assessment. Students in kindergarten, first and second grades participated in the program for three years, demonstrated growth in the areas of math and reading as compared to the non-attending peers. So yes, um, it is making a difference for those students. And when we think about, they're starting, um, below where they're not attending peers are, and they made growth over the summer. So we're helping to close that gap for those students, um, by offering that summer climb program. So I, I stand by for questions.
For the ones who we invite and do not attend, do we keep track of what those numbers are and what the issues might be, why they're not able to attend?
They do. You know, um, when I talked to the principals at the buildings to say, okay, how is that working? Are you having a hard time recruiting students? And some of it's family situation, you know, maybe they're, um, not going to be around as much during the summer, but we really do try and encourage those kids to come. But they said it's getting easier and easier to recruit, um, families to attend because they know what the program is. And they're starting earlier, so they really start about conference time, um, to have those conversations with parents. So.
And this will be the first year, I know we, we talked a lot about, you know, when we first looked at our strategic plan, about our third grade reading scores. So this will really be the first year that we will have had students who have gone through this program three years, and will now take that Smarter Balance test this year, and we could maybe compare and get some, not that this isn't real data, but some data as we look at those scores from a state perspective, correct?
Yeah. What you're seeing, that's a good point, Carla. You're, what you're seeing here is, uh, growth data and, and digging into that gap, as Dr. Boyson talked about, will also get some point in time data, which the Smarter Balance will give us to, uh, now, we won't get that information till...
Next year.
Right.
After the fourth year of...
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, so we need, so we'll need to make some decisions on, are we seeing the return on the investment that we want? Is this a program we want to continue, and those sorts of things, based on the data that we have? But you're exactly right. Beginning next year, we'll have that point in time data that we can, can begin to look at.
May I ask that you acknowledge the report?
May I have a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Results look good. Um, I hope as we move forward with it, that we, uh, can consider the possibility of expanding. I know that it's still a, a pilot. I don't know how long we can call it a pilot, but, uh, I'd, based on the results that I see, I'd like us to at least consider the possibility of expanding to maybe one more school to offer the same sort of, uh, an opportunity to, again, more, more kids who are struggling, so. Good report. Thanks.
And that would come up through the budgeting process as we, as we go through that, at the, at the turn of the calendar.
Great. All right. Um, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries. And we are on to policy.
We have, uh, several that we're going to go through tonight. Um, and as we know, but I will reiterate, um, we continually review policies and regulations, um, that need to be added, deleted, revised, or in some cases, update the language, um, based on state laws and federal laws. Um, so the first two that we have up are, um, up for their second reading. Um, and it is IKF, and it's accompanying regulation, graduation requirements, and JJID, and it's accompanying regulation, student physicals for school athletics. Um, both of these policies were out for a first reading. And so, and we did not receive any, um, comments. So I move to approve the second reading of the, uh, two policies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? I, I would like to discuss the, uh, graduation requirements. As I said at the time of the first reading, I do have concerns about, particularly our students who are enrolled in special education programs. And I am very aware that what we're doing, we need to do to comply with IDEA, the federal law that comes to the state and then comes to our district. Um, that doesn't give me any comfort as I, as I look at what this policy will do to our kids in our special ed programs. The language previously had been that, that we worked to make sure that, that our students in special ed receive a high school diploma. The language has changed that specifically says we don't guarantee the students that. And to me, that's not, uh, giving those students the opportunity to be as successful in life as they can be. And it, it, to me, is more a lifetime success issue than it is even a workforce issue. The, uh, uh, an adult going in to apply for a job, we have many employers in Sioux Falls, good employers, who require a minimum of a high school diploma. We have kids in our special ed programs that have the ability to receive a high school diploma, and that's not going to happen. And that is very difficult for me to support. So, um, that being said, again, I realize that our hands are somewhat tied, um, but I will continue to advocate for a change in that as, as we move forward. So, um, you will hear me, uh, cast a no vote this evening for the policy because of my personal conviction that we aren't doing the best that we can do. Again, not blaming our school district, not blaming the state of South Dakota, but it's, uh, it, it, there's a fairness issue that I just don't think is passing what is my personal fairness issue, so.
And for, I guess, everybody else here, the audience and other people, Dr. Maher, could you have, like Deb or someone, explain what we are doing so, I, I just want people to leave with the idea we're not doing things for special ed, for the graduation requirements?
Right. Well, first of all, I think that was really well stated. I have a, I have a question for you, Kent, and I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot. That is not my intent at all, so I don't think I'm going to, the, uh, but my question would be, is there any, is there any change in the, in the way the policy is structured that would make you feel more comfortable, or is it not really a policy issue, it's a concept issue?
Um, it's, it's a concept issue. And, and I, again, our hands are tied because of, of what IDEA has told us we must do. Um, the, and I know that the state has had, uh, some conversation regarding, uh, some conversation that's happened over the last month, and, um, the, the state has said that, that students who are enrolled in special education don't have to pass any, any exams to graduate. Well, that's not true. A student who's on an IEP, which is the pathway to get them into special education programs, just because they're on an IEP doesn't, they don't get a pass on taking exam, exams. They do have to. And it, it's a, it's a concept that I just, I, I can't support it.
Yeah. I, I understand that. And I, I think rather than, rather than go through a, a conversation with either Dr. Boyson, who leads this from the curriculum services side, or Deb Milenberg Wilson, who leads this from the special education side, I don't know that there would be any update or any changes in our, in our policy that could, could address that necessarily.
There isn't.
And your point was well taken, how this, it's, this isn't a State Department issue, this isn't a, a, a locally generated issue, rather, it's an issue through ESA that comes through the state and comes to us.
Right.
And I think we, I think we need the policy for compliance, but I think your, uh, I think what I'm hearing, Kent, is your, your, um, abstinence in, in terms of us being supportive of this policy is a bigger picture than what we're generating locally. So I don't know that I need, that we'll, we'll do anything here other than say, I appreciate what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Then we've got a motion in a second, and this is for both, uh, graduation requirements and student physicals. Okay. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Aye. Motion carries four to one.
All right. Next up, our review revision of five policies. Um, these were, let me show it up. Um, we reviewed the policies, and, uh, given the minimal revisions, um, to the policies, second readings are not necessary. So I'll go through them. Uh, DGA, depository, no changes. DKB, salary deductions, no changes. DLA, employee benefits administration, we just updated language to current practice. DM, and its accompanying regulation, cash in school buildings, no changes. And EC, and its accompanying regulation, building maintenance, building, buildings, grounds, property management. We added language that matches current practice. So I move to approve, um, the review revision of the, uh, said policies.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries.
And lastly, we have a first reading of JCA and its accompanying regulation, assignment of students to schools and open enrollment, um, and non-resident students. So I'm going to go through the changes, um, that we have laid out. Quite extensive, so, um, this is a first reading, and it'll be back, um, before the board on November 13th. Um, so we updated the definition of resident student to include groups of students who are considered residents as a matter of law, um, for example, homeless students. Add, uh, we added residency verification process requiring new residents to provide, document, to provide documentation to verify district residency. If doc, documents are unattainable, school staff may initiate a residence ver, verification check. Removed, we removed the language, um, sorry, removed the option for students to attend the school in the attendance area assigned to a parent guardian's work site when the employer provides daycare without open enrollment. Um, this is a good example of when Citibank had their daycare, um, over by Renberg. Um, we updated open enrollment processes, including clarifying December 1st as the first day, the district will accept applications for the, for the succeeding school year. Update process for a student returning to resident district to match new state law. Explain the process in which open enrollment applications are processed. Explain open enrollment process for student in need of special education services. Clarify that out-of-district students applying to specialized schools must also apply for open enrollment. And updated, uh, open enrollment capacity determinations for building, class, and programs. So again, quite a few changes, so, um, certainly recommend the public to go out and read, um, the changes to the policy and bring forth any, um, comments or concerns, um, prior to November 13th, when it'll be back to us for a second reading. So I would like to move to acknowledge the first reading of JCA and its accompanying regulation with the understanding that we'll return for a second reading on November 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. That motion carries.
Move that we go into executive session, SDCL 1-25-22.
Thank you.